A diligence due to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Kristen, call roll please. This is Datzl here. Mr. Yashimura?
Here.
Ms. Faridley?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Datzl?
Here.
Hey, Jim, do you have a largest update?
No, there's nothing cooking there.
Okay. Jim, about tech update?
Yeah, just a few things. Couple weeks ago, Dave Ox's manufacturing class had thirty companies come in and watch the kids do a task and observe them. And at the end of the day, all twenty-eight kids got offered a job. So that was a good, a good day for our kids through Butler Tech, the manufacturing class over at Colrain. And then we're in the middle of the signups for the new classes for Butler Tech for all of our kids. And then one other thing, John Grant was named to the Cincy Power 100 Most Influential People under the Education Committee. John is our superintendent at Butler Tech, who we send our kids for their career job.
That's it. Congratulations to John. Okay, do we have any reports tonight from employee organizations? Certificate and license? Any reports from classified? Any reports from school-related organizations? Okay, I have not received any requests for community comments. So we'll move right in.
Yes, thank you. First item is certified retirements and resignations. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certified retirements and resignations as listed.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding certified and retirements and resignations?
I do.
I want to know if there's any follow-up, Daryl, between you and Kristen about calling these people?
Yes. So every time that we have a resignation or someone leaving the district, Kristen is making contact with them, asking a series of questions and keeping data on that. So we've been trying together, but we have not had a lot of success with people returning phone calls and being engaged in the process. But if you wanted to, I can give you one.
Yeah, I'd like to see some of the other things. Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion pass five to zero.
It works. It works, guys.
Next agenda item is classified personnel, classified retirements and resignations. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding the classified retirements and resignations? Motion pass five to zero.
The next item is approval of fiscal items. I will pass this on to Mrs. Wells.
Good evening. First, I'd like to ask the Board to dispense with reading of and approve the organizational minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Motion pass five to zero.
Okay, next I'd like to ask the Board to dispense with reading of and approve the tax budget minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions regarding the tax budget hearing minutes? Motion pass five to zero.
Okay, and next I'd like to ask the Board to dispense with reading of and approve the regular meeting minutes from January seventh.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second regarding the regular meeting minutes from January seventh. Any questions? Okay. Motion pass five to zero.
I'd like to ask the Board to finally dispense with reading of and approve the work session minutes from January twenty-eighth.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or comments regarding the meeting minutes from the work session on January twenty-eighth? Okay. Motion pass five to zero.
Next I'd like to ask the Board to approve the financial statements for the month of December. December is halfway through our fiscal year, and our revenues were at forty-nine percent of our projected, and our expenditures were at forty-nine percent of our projected, and our cash balance was at fifty percent of our target. So we were about, oh, sorry, eighty-two percent of target. So we were about, we're on target for the year, on track with our forecast of our projection. As far as our investments, we were at two percent annual return, so right at the projected and target amounts. And the monthly bills were our routine monthly bills, plus we had some actual facility project expenditures that were wrapping up our project. We have our SRO and investigator contract services to the township, some bus repairs. This was back in December, so we had our Colrain football playoff ticket expenditure, and financing, some Arby's sports officials, Piccolum Resources, and our weightlifting for the year. So with that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the December two thousand eighteen financial.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. Are there any questions regarding the financial reports of the treasurer for the month of December?
I have, I have two questions. So it looks like for Colrain Township for student resources, that they were paid over a hundred and five, about a hundred and five thousand dollars for just the month of December?
Probably for several months.
Oh, we just got an invoice. The invoice came in that month. And then the nursing services, can you explain that?
Nursing services, we hire nurses either for self, or nurses are out, or also for students that need individual or services. It could be either.
Okay, thank you.
You call, I can look specifically with the.
Okay.
How is that going rate for the police services that you were talking about? How is that compared to Hamilton County or other police forces or?
Different that to our.
And I can address some of it. We've had many conversations around this in our superintendent's meeting in Hamilton County. Some districts are getting charged as high as a hundred, a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty thousand per officer. I don't know the exact sum, but.
For the whole school year?
For one school year, one officer. We are at around forty thousand, I believe, per officer. I don't know the exact. But last time I checked, it was around that, and that's because they are pulling in retired offices, officers. The one thing we have with Chief Danny is a very good relationship where he is trying to find retired officers who can meet the regulations of being armed, wearing the proper equipment, and getting the proper training for a school resource officer. If you remember, we talked about a grant from the state that they gave out to every school district that's to pay for training. So he knows that realistically, we can't afford to pay a hundred thousand dollar resource officer to be there. So he works with us, communicates with all of us, and gets us the best deals that we possibly can. So that part of that fee is paying for a resource officer at Northwest High School, two at Colrain High School, and Dean Dorfline, who works in our truancy office, and.
Truancy officer and the security officer.
The security officer. So that's a partial payment.
And is that working just the nine months of the school year?
Correct. And then that's the other thing, they hire them so that once the school year's over, they have certain days they have to go out for training, but then they also put them on the road and they do it there unless they're retired.
Gotcha. Okay.
Is there any way that we could hire and have an employed person do that that may be less cost? Is that possible?
It wouldn't be less cost because of the added benefits and the training that you'd have to send them to and all of the people that have to do with certification that they do through the police department.
And it depends on what type of person you want your schools. Right now, we have police officers who are used to this on a daily basis. Other districts have tried doing other things, training coaches, putting guns on them. The last school shooting had some issues with that, couldn't really cover what they needed. So we feel like it's a better position to work with our local police department because they also have all the connections through the radio and everything else that they work with.
And this, this hundred and five, is that for the year or is that?
Our contract for the current year, the more through for the SROs, not county middle school because that was done briefly, plus the investigator was four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the year. It's all our high school, SROs, and that. And then the middle schools are about forty, forty-two thousand dollars per officer.
So the two middle school officers were contracted at forty-two thousand per officer. Dean is full-time twelve months, I believe, or is he ten months, or do you have a date? Ten months for his contract? Because he does truancy issues after school ends and then prior, starting August one, getting them back in school.
So the four twenty was just for the middle and high schools, correct?
And two others.
And two others. And then there was an additional seventy?
Additional eighty for the resource officers added at Colrain Middle or Pleasant Run Middle.
Have I said that right?
Yeah. So you have one at Colrain Middle, forty-two thousand, and you have one at Pleasant Run Middle, forty-two thousand. And then White Oak, they cannot, they have not found anyone yet to fill that, fill that position. So this is where we put one in each of the middle schools.
I'm not questioning that because I don't think that's not what we have. I was just curious. I didn't realize that.
No, these are good questions.
That much.
Yeah. Yeah, we pay a lot of money to the township.
Do you pay?
Yeah. And you know, as we go through the letting talk and the work sessions, those are things that are going to have to come up. Is that money well spent? Is that something we want to continue?
To give a little bit of history, and pretty much everybody's sitting up here, I think Chris is probably the only one that was there at the time, but this goes all the way back to the Stone Creek development of Colrain, where Al Garden and Fridays and all that is. Originally, back then, when the township did a TIF, part of it was our first couple officers, we weren't going to have to pay for those. But then trustees were, different trustees were elected, and then out of the blue, that got pulled away from us. And we've been paying ever since, correct? And it never got back to that original agreement, although the TIF lasted the original agreement. So, okay, does anybody else have any questions?
Next I'd like to ask the Board to accept, approve, create a fund, and appropriate the No Kid Hungry Grant for our food service department. This grant is to be used at Taylor's Struble Plaza.
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments?
I'm just curious, how come Taylor says more? Because we have the same amount of kids.
I asked the same question, lady.
Okay.
Just for the grant.
They're hungry. Well, I'm glad we got them. Great. Great.
And can I add, just because this is a sore spot in the community for those schools who don't get this. This is not something that we mandate. It is something that we are granted. We cause up the numbers that come in and make up of the school, whether it be economic disadvantage, basically is the biggest one. But we don't just sit here and pick and choose which schools do it. ODE tells us which schools is it.
That's a good point, because I did have, I've had a couple of questions, because ironically, it's the three schools that got the three new schools. And it was like, how come? Did it happen because of that? And it's like, no. So, okay, anybody else? Okay. Motion pass five to zero.
Finally, I'd like to ask the Board to approve payment for San Bernard for, for over three thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Questions regarding the minimum certificates?
Was this something that was already applied to them?
Yes. Their, their budgets of their auxiliary funds, it was just the timing and purchase order, payment, that was over the first order and date was probably first birthday, sorry, after they.
Is this an additional budget that was marketed in?
No. It's part of the budget. It's just the timing of when they put their purchase order in versus when they actually obligated the budget.
Anything else? Motion pass five to zero.
There we go. Next item is a general business item, donations to Northwest Local School District. This is Emily Stepanek. Would like to donate a hundred and fifty dollars' worth of books to Marford Heights, a parent of Baldwin High. Mr. Will, I apologize for pronunciation, Martian, would like to donate two hundred decks of playing cards for a value of three hundred and forty dollars to Marford Heights Elementary to be cast up during the Title One funded Parent Baldwin Day Night on February twenty-eighth. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the donations to Northwest Local School District as listed. So moved.
It's been moved in second. Any questions regarding the donations? I'd just like to thank both Emily and Will, I'm not going to take the last name, for their generous donations. Motion pass five to zero.
Next item is a general business item, is vendor contracts. Superintendent Treasurer recommends the Board of Education approve the vendor contracts as listed.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved in second. Questions regarding vendor contracts?
All right, the next item is a general business item. Also, it is a resolution authorizing the rejection of bids in a current emergency for the land side reconstruction of Colrain High School. Because the engineer has determined that each of the base bids was substantially higher than the ten percent of the detailed estimate of cost, Board of Education has convinced the notwithstanding requirements of ORC Section one fifty-three point fifty. Further delays in repairing the land side constitutes an emergency measure, since delay could endanger the health, welfare, and safety of the community. Board of Education has decided to reject all bids for bid package, instruct the architect to recalculate the detailed estimate costs for the project, and negotiate with at least three vendors to construct the project. So what occurs here is the public knows, and the Board's already been informed of this information, is you put out bids, and they put together proposals of what they think the bids should come in at, based on the amount of work to be done. The bids came in ten percent higher, so we can't accept them. We also have baseball season coming up soon. We are now February sixth. We need to have these fields secured and ready to go probably by, they'll try to get out April one, or earlier if they can, but this is a way to go out, and it's not just, this is to secure that we can't go out and say, oh, they're our favorite, so we're going to pick them to do this. They'll still secure other bids, bring to you what is the best bid. And the problem with this bid and why we think, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, that went up a little more than we expected, is the timing. It's got to be quick, it's got to be efficient. You can see what we have rain today, you can see what we have rain tomorrow. You had thirty degrees below last week, sixty degrees on Monday, so those swings are probably affecting them a little bit. So I just wanted to make sure you folks knew, and if you had any questions, then make sure the public.
What's Northwest High School's baseball field? Are we allowed to use their field?
They could, but what you run into is you need a JV and a varsity field, and with rainouts, you schedule thirty games, so you might play ten real quick, and then you might have ten days, so you're playing back to back to back. So this leads into, and I might as well talk about it now, is we have had discussions with using Heritage Park in Colrain Township. So originally, the folks that met with Jeff and Jeff Milton, the township, had the impression that it's two seventy-five a game, every game. After calling Jeff back and some people who did some research who were at the last work session, we found out that it is two seventy-five a day, and once you pay for one day, that goes for the entire year. So the actual cost of a ball field, and some of this goes back to Joe's comments about using other fields, is that the actual cost would have been one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars if we got us Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, then you got to have Saturday, and believe it or not, depending on weather, they will play on Sunday. If you're not playing, you like to practice, well, they also have other teams. I mean, there's double ABC teams, there's not bull teams that need this field, so they worry making commitments to some of them. So it's not going to work out that we can get a field every day we need it, we need it. So they went back to Jack and the high school development plan, looking at what they want to do with athletic fields. The other thing that was a deterrent was that it's eight miles to get there. So freshmen and sophomores got to find a way to get to practice, the expenses of a bus or a van if we had them driven there every day. So it's going to be better off to go this avenue and get it done this way.
Yes, so the engineer and architect, are they paid by percent of the overall project? Or are they, we have a flat fee, they do the project, we pay them?
I'll put that to Chris, and they're right behind you. It's a flat fee.
Okay.
Client Jersey's here, if you have any questions about that.
So also, just to add in, the hill slide has to be corrected, because it's not going to stop. Right now, they can still play baseball on the baseball diamond. In the new plan that we're looking at, they would move the fence over, install a warning track to, so players know where that fence is, move the bullpens to the outside of the fence, so we could carry on baseball. The problem is, is that we have to stop the slide. The expensive way that we put out the bid, that was more weather permitting, so even though we had bad weather, they could still get in there and do the work. It involved a lot more work because they had to add a haul road at the bottom, and it's a lot, bringing in a lot of rock. But obviously, that's too expensive. So we looked at another way to lay back that hill, which will still work with the baseball diamond. But this work, just to make it clear, is to stop the sliding hill, or else we will eventually have a larger problem.
And I know this is probably not predictable, but what, is there any probability that we'll see this situation arise like in five years? I mean, is the fix that we're going to apply, is it going to, I know you can't have warranty with it, but.
Well, and yeah, there kind of is. So the first way was a higher guarantee that it would not slide again. This way, there is a slight possibility, but it would be very minimal, and we could control that. As it is right now, it's just going to continue. So naturally, the longer we wait, the worse this gets.
Sure.
More difficult.
The longer we wait, the more that comes in, like first bids.
Or it's, or it's going to eat away more property that we have to lay back.
Anybody else? Questions? Second. It's been moved in second. Are there any other questions or comments? Motion pass five to zero. Did it go now?
There you go. There we go. Next item is a general business item, insurance renewal, general liability, auto and property. Superintendent Treasurer recommends the Board of Education approve renewal of insurance policies for the Northwest Local Schools effective July one, two thousand nineteen, with no change in rate pending any premium changes as listed in the attachment.
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Nice, no change in rate. Any questions?
Next item is certificate licensed personnel items. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificate licensed personnel items as listed. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions regarding the certificate licensed personnel?
Next item is classified personnel items. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Questions regarding classified personnel? Motion pass five to zero.
Next item is out-of-state field trip requests. Critical instructions, the Northwest High School show choir and jazz band are requesting permission to take thirty students to South Airborne High School in Aurora, Indiana for a competition on Saturday, March second. No school days will be missed. So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. Questions or comments? I would just like to wish them good luck in their competition. Okay. Motion pass five to zero.
Next item is very similar, extended field trip request. Colrain High School show carts, the Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the extended field trip request as listed. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Okay. Motion pass five to zero.
All right. For my update, first thing I want to talk about is some boundaries we're going to change in the district. Met with several assorted families and individuals about the area of the yacht club and surrounding streets that go to and from. I've asked Bob Engel and Mr. Thomas, or Thomas, to look into what it would affect kid-wise for the request for these kids to go back to Colrain now. It only affects fifteen kids. The majority of these parents send their kids to parochial schools. So by moving this boundary, it helps also a little with numbers at Taylor, but it moves them back to their home school. So by changing the boundaries back to what they are, it would allow those fifteen to go back to Colrain as a home school. We are also allowing, though, if they've gotten to Taylor and they like Taylor and what's going on there, they will be allowed to stay until they leave elementary school. But any from there on would go to Colrain now. So I wanted to make the Board aware of that and see if there was any questions around that.
If, how, does that affect transportation? I mean, what if five of them want to stay at Taylor?
We only have one bus that goes about, back there, so it would not affect, we could go to Taylor, which is one mile to the left, or Colrain, which is one mile to the right. So there would be no additional cost.
Why was the boundary set as it is now?
Originally, when we looked at the numbers, we expected a larger amount of numbers to come out of the yacht club and the parochial streets. We kind of knew they were parochial, we were going to say. But it is so transient in that area that we're not getting the enrollment that we thought we would get. Now, with the economy going up, it could change, but knowing what Colrain is now and how they've settled with their enrollment, seeing what the new schools have settled, we have a better picture of what would actually occur.
And what would be the benefit of moving back?
The benefit of moving back is it's working with our partners, our community, our parents who have come to me and asked us to look into it. And so looking at the boundaries, seeing that it would not affect transportation, it would not affect overloading class sizes, that it was something that was.
So, so these kids are currently at Taylor, and they, their parents want them to go back to Colrain the next year?
It's, no, it's, it's not coming from those parents. The majority of the requests are coming from parochial parents who are very vocal about this. You've had several come to the Board meetings that have been vocal about it, and all our SAC and VIP meetings are very vocal about it. And they said, we don't see a way that the district works with parochial parents. And so Dustin and I met and started this meeting earlier in the year. We continued conversations on. And to make this move is not something that is going to punish either school or punish the kids. There's no harm, no foul with move. It should be a win-win situation for both.
No, that's not, I guess I'm just confused. The parochial parents, are they then going to send their kids to Colrain?
No, this goes back to when we had folks at the Board meeting last year.
Okay.
Who said they didn't feel like it was safe to live in the Taylor area. Who said they didn't feel like it was safe to live in the Taylor area, right, wrong, or indifferent.
Yeah, I remember that.
But you have a long contingent, a long list of voters, and so if this is something the board doesn't want us to move ahead with, I would be glad to explain it to them. But there are about forty-five to fifty who have made this request, and they have Facebook page that they go through, they're waiting to hear final approval so that they can let everybody know.
My understanding is that this is more for a copy value standpoint than...
Correct. Yeah, it's not about, it's not gonna change the kids, we're still gonna have the same amount of kids. It's just if those fifteen wanna stay at Taylor, they can stay at Taylor. If they wanna go back to Colrain, they'd have that option to go back. Those folks, some are happy, but this is the majority of landowners who send their kids to parochial schools and want to show that their property feeds the Colrain.
And my concern with that is that there were a lot of questions and a lot of the in the district, and this would open up, I hope, a real can of worms, or the other worms, any other questions that they're learning or...
Being at all the meetings, the only questions I heard about was, "Why are we making sure the buildings have equal amount of E D, S W D, and white and African-American population?" That statement we had to do that. So this comes down to working with groups, our communication audit, as we talked about the other night, says that groups feel like they're alienated, not dealt with, not talked to. I've talked to you repeatedly about going to St. James and St. Ives to talk to them, so this is a way for us to open communication. If the board decides you don't wanna do this, I would be glad to tell them.
I'm honestly questioning, because I'm familiar with another area that was distance-wise, seemed to be closer to another school, but they were actually redistricted to a tenth of a mile, further distance to get into another.
Has this part represented themselves at board meeting or contacted myself or Dustin? Because I haven't heard from them tonight.
Yes. The person is normally here and very vocal about that, they're not here tonight.
Well, what, I don't know who that person is. I mean, if they're here to board meeting, it's public record.
So Monica Bolce is definitely...
But my understanding of Monica and her complaint was it was the kids who were transferred to P R E, it wasn't kids transferred out. She didn't want economically disadvantaged kids transferred to P R E.
It wasn't the economically disadvantages of this group, distance-wise, it's closer to Taylor, but they're going a tenth of a mile further to get into P R E.
Correct, and their kids. So I'm not sure, I never understood Monica's point on that. She didn't like the kids going there, because the numbers balanced out perfectly.
Is the fact that we're having, why are we pushing someone further to get into this school and they're closer to this school?
Because we did a pretty good job with what our numbers are. I just said our numbers are balanced, and that was our goal, and so we can track and versitrate to see what the numbers are. But I've never heard it was questioned as to, they were a tenth of a mile farther away, it was always, always about who's moving into the school.
It was a distance.
And that's, so that's the decision the board has to make, is that perception you want, that we limit who can move into a school because of what your makeup might be, is the way that was presented to myself, Dustin and Chris.
Definitely more discussion on that.
Well, it is something that our policy says, "I can make the decision," so do we wanna wait on that? Because they're waiting for a response to move it to the march meeting then?
I just wanted to understand, I...
Yeah.
I just wanted to understand.
My job is to make sure that you guys don't put yourself in a position by decisions you make, and to make that move to Pleasant Run Elementary was for one sole purpose. It would have had increased E D and S W D students in P R E, is why that originally was brought up. I had many conversations on that. That's not fair to kids.
Yeah, so undoing the decisions already made, because it said, "What you undo one, then it starts, it makes sense you can undo the others." Well, we've opened for discussion for a lot of other things, so that may be the reason for, for the movement from Taylor, but here are other questions, or other things that we just went along with. I wasn't on the board, I was at that time, but as a community member at that time, we're accepting because this is the decision of the group. But now we're saying, "Well, this is backdrop on this from my area," but there's a lot of things...
We've already moved other boundaries also because of requests, so this is not the first one. And that was done, that announced at board minutes and so on and so forth. This is not the first area. So this is...
My, my question was more, I was confused. I was picturing that, you know, we're gonna send an extra bus to do all this, and we're gonna have kids that are there now, but I guess as a parent, I just couldn't understand if my elementary child was well-adjusted at the school while sending my children, sending them to Colrain, that, that's what I was asking. But I wasn't thinking, oh, I agree with the property value thing the best.
Doesn't change. So it's, it's, it's the political game you play. These parents have been very vocal, Dustin and I met with them, we have met with them many times, I have, I've had email communicate, we have another parent who is at Colrain and Colrain Middle, Mr. Gann, who has been very vocal about it, and it is a big item out there, so... Guys, you really need to talk into your mics, or people are gonna...
Ah.
That's, just trying to help you. You can do what you want to do, I'm just telling you about the perception.
Well, I just wanted to know, you know, I kind of agree with Diane, that if you redistrict one section, there's, there's going to be a snowball effect, because people will talk, they'll get wind of it, and all of a sudden, you're gonna have to redistrict a whole bunch of others.
That is a possibility, but every decision we will make will be based on what spaces do we have in our school. We don't go open enrollment, because we don't have an open spaces at our school. But I, I will never personally ever make a recommendation to you not to move kids because they're African-American, or white, or economically disadvantaged, or students with disabilities. And that's what that request was. I was requested, time after time, to put numbers out that showed the breakdown of what the students would make up P R E versus Taylor versus Struble. It was not a location where it makes sense to move, it's fifteen out of nine thousand. If other people bring things to us, we, we don't just sit and say, "No, we made a decision, we have to stick with it." Nobody's saying we're perfect with our decisions. If somebody wants it discussed and wants us to look at it, we've basically been doing that the last five board meetings per public request for records. This isn't something we just started doing. So we could, the policy says, Chris and I make the decision and things happen, I want to run it past you to make sure you wanted to do that, because the minute you do or don't, folks will show up, and the purpose is not to get you blindsided. And part of the talk that will come in, whether it's relevant or not, or whether anybody cares or not, but we're putting a lot of time into trying to work with people, improve communication, and get a levy passed, and this is a big part of that.
Well, I, I will agree. I know there were other changes that were made after you met with, with different areas, the Struble attendance and so on and so forth, so I understand, I, I just was confused on that.
I don't know. I mean, they're all good questions, but there are distinct differences between what this is and what the others were.
But you understand it.
Oh, yeah, big time. It, it doesn't, I'm trying to do what I think's in your best interest. It's no skin either way here, I just think it's a good move for the district. But if you threw communication to each other, or if you want the gentleman's name of who I've been talking to, each of you could call them instead of a meeting with them, and talk about what's going on, it's obviously not allowed for over two of you to be with them, but I can definitely forward you their concerns and have them talk to you individually, because they would love to do that.
Do we need a motion?
No, there is no motion. Board policy says Chris and I can redistrict whenever we feel necessary because of moving things. But if there's concerns about what is to move, then we'll hold off on it. I'll make phone calls tomorrow morning, telling them the board's not comfortable with the decision right now. We'll come back, revisit the march, see if you have any other things that you would like to add to it, if you can open it.
I don't like that. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it.
I don't like that. I'd like to take it to the march, too. I'm okay with it.
And we can do, if we can come up with any more information about the work session, that'd be a good place to do it. Maybe those folks who are invited to be a part of the work session, some of those folks can show up to that area. Like I said, everything we've input on work session, this request is what people want. There was lots of time, and so we request about what to do with parking lots, people do things like that, so we're willing to work with anybody.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, really all it's doing is the boundaries changing. Kids have a choice, they can either stay here or go wherever they like, and there's a perception that it will increase, you're probably about you, because you're not going to the school without, it's a red that show, right?
Right, and when they did get moved to Taylor, the board gets...
And if really, as long as the kids are not being uprooted and moved without consent, I don't see that there's any viability, because we're beating, we're beating the community's ...
You know, you're, you're looking at, you, we just put a thirty million dollar school in at Taylor, and you're comparing the, the property value to Colrain, a school that's been there a hundred years. I mean, I'm not saying Colrain's school's not worth a hundred, thirty-three million dollars, but guarantee it's not. I mean...
It's all perception.
Yeah. Insurance protection.
I, I will have to say, actually, the way Mark ordered it, I, I agree with that as well. I will say, I don't philosophically agree with the fact, and I had trouble sitting here when it was insinuated that some people didn't want their kids going to school, want the kids to go to Taylor, and that...
Sure. Was it safe to pick up the parking lot?
Yes, I don't agree with any of that. But if this is, as Mark said, it, we're not uproot, we're not now all of a sudden changing our mind, and because a handful of people want something, we're moving all these kids, there's a choice which school they're gonna be at. You're right, you go down the road, you take a right or take a left, there's a mile either way to get to the school, and it's not gonna disrupt transportation, we've got enough with that, but if you're saying that'll run smoothly, then, I mean, I'm okay with it.
I just, one final point is that having this group where they're able to choose between one or the other because of their concerns is another thing, sorry, what perception that gives amongst the nine thousand individuals?
Well, there is the choice involved, so we would move the boundary back, just like we did yesterday, and some people, if you wanna stay, that's where you stay currently. It's not here, here, you get stuck with it. It's not choice.
But this group of individuals has a choice to go to Colrain or Taylor and make that decision, ten can go to Taylor and go to Colrain, finish off their elementary.
Well, there's fifteen, so if five would go back and ten wanna stay, that's just a one-time choice. We've done that many, many times in this district, when we've moved boundaries, you have a choice to stay where you are, or we have a choice, we have that going on right now in the district. We have people who live on Pleasant Run side, drive their kids to white, and they just make it longer. So...
That's true, it's not a, it's these fifteen kids are going to have, they can stay at Taylor or they can go back to Colrain, but it's not like next year, all the kids in the neighborhood get a choice, it's going back to the way the boundary was. And if I remember correctly, this has been a discussion going on from the beginning, so it's not like all of a sudden, we have some parents that are coming up with something and we're running it backwards to undo everything. It is something that, you know, we see, we see how things were going and so on and so forth. So, I mean...
Like we said in the communication audit, number one thing is we don't allow people to get feedback. This has been a lot of feedback, this may give us no different than the folks showing up from Pleasant Run and wanting answers on lights and streets and parking lots and stuff, which are over a minute, but I feel it is our job to listen to everybody who lives in this district, and I'll never set you up for a position that's gonna put you in a bad place. So it's just talking to you about it, making sure you see all the angles, gather more information, and if we can get something to work session, we will, if not, we'll do it at board meeting and march. And meantime, I will forward all of your emails to these parents, let them reach out to you, because if there's doubts, I think that's the best way for people to do it. The next update is we did price out the extra parking lot at P R E and the exit lane at Hamilton Avenue, did not have a price for you the last time we were here. The price for a road to Hamilton Avenue is four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars using the shortest route, and the price for, to add seventy-seven official parking slots is three hundred and eighty-five thousand for seventy-seven slots. We have communicated this at P K meetings and other meetings. We have a lot of Colrain and Colrain Middle School parents upset that the board is only listening to one view, and I said, "I can assure you, they're not listening to one view, that I'm letting them know everything, that they don't feel anything should be taken from their new K two-eight campus, that it is not fair for people to offer suggestions of what Beavis money and Welch money was designated to be used." So these are the costs for theirs, it's again, just communicating it out to you so you have knowledge if somebody asks, "Would it be worthwhile?", because you'll have to make decisions on, is it worthwhile to spend four thirty-four per road, or is three eighty-five a good thing? My recommendation, and if we ever came to this decision, you would vote on this, you would approve it, is not to do it, because I think if the schools do what they're supposed to do and schedule events that are not on the same night, I don't think there's issues. But we've had two or three mess-ups where they've scheduled events on the same night, and it's been a mess. Period.
I, I agree with you, eight hundred thou, over eight hundred thousand dollars for both of these is ridiculous. You know, I note the last board meeting, you said, "Hey, let's repaint what we've got, we can get another sixty spots in there where those basketball hoops are."
Did we get a price on that?
Last time, to repaint...
Just resurface. Todd, you would suggest it...
Resurfacing.
Just resurface.
Yeah, we don't have a price on that, but it, it would be minimal.
Yeah, I, you know, there's another sixty spots that come available, which is plenty additional parking, then even trying to consider four hundred and thirty-four thousand for a road and another seventy-seven slots for three hundred and eighty-five thousand. That's, in my opinion, that's ridiculous, that we could resurface it, get another sixty spots in there, and then everybody should be happy there's plenty of parking there.
Also, just to clarify, those are subcontractor numbers, so that you would have to add designing fees, permits, inspection, zoning, that kind of stuff, and so to do, you're probably looking, you know, upwards of a million dollars.
I, I think it, it would be a good idea if we could get a close number on that resurfacing. I mean, I, I don't know if it's five thousand dollars, or it's fifty thousand dollars or whatever, but...
Yeah, we'll get that here.
It sounds like, I mean, you're talking, giving up seventeen slots.
Yeah, and I think we just talked about doing the part in front of P R E, we could do the entire side lot and extend up past P R M S also, so... When you're pricing, what I'm saying is price all the way up, yeah, the whole lot.
I think that's a great option, but my fear is, if you're putting more parking spaces in, that's more people that can come in, that's more traffic, and a more potential risk. So I think if we do that, I think there needs to be one community buy-in, because if it works, then that, everybody wins. But if it doesn't, that's gonna be a significantly worse situation that we're working with now. So if there's somebody that we could turn to that, say, could do a flow analysis, or some type of idea, so that we can at least try to eliminate as many dead ends on this road as we can, I think that would be maybe worth its weight in gold.
Yeah, so we've already talked to client engineers, our engineers, and they've already put that together.
Awesome.
We'll be able to submit that soon.
And isn't, aren't we talking that area just resurfacing during the day? Vehicles don't go through there anyhow.
No, it's locked off.
It's locked off, so there's not...
Drop off and pickup.
This, this would help alleviate the after, the evening stuff when there's not enough parking places.
Yeah, because none of you wanna sit at a board meeting next year and have the same chaos we had this year. So it just depends on which way you wanna go. So let's get that price together to black, it's really not black company, it's just resurfacing, which just covers everything, and new lines are put in, that can be measured out, get clients to do that flow. We have worked, I can just tell you, Dustin can verify, we have worked very hard with our principals at those two buildings. He is monitoring it, he is on it, so that's, those overlaps are not gonna happen.
I have two points. One, I was very surprised the year that the spaces that were allocated for the schools is, is it like two point six spaces per classroom, or something in that range is what it was presented?
Um, yes, that, that is the rule of thumb that they use for schools.
So when it comes to after-school activities, when you have two point six spaces per classroom, you add on the staff that's there to take out, let's say maybe one, you're basically accounting for one, two families per classroom to attend after-school activities, per classroom, not per student, per classroom. So for a school to be allocated to have three spaces per classroom to have an after-school event, even in your best day, even in your best wish, you don't have the capacity for the parent in our community to attend after-school events, after-school, just because of parking speed, because the parking lot is so limited. So it's not even about we want or wish it. The fact that it was actually allocated, that's the standard, we're unfortunately going to the minimum of maximum three spaces per classroom to attend events, I, as a parent, I was shocked and heard that that was what we're only expecting for the downs.
Well, I guess my only question would be then, why haven't we heard from Taylor and Struble parents? I mean, they were built on the same specs, and I think a lot of it is...
I mean, they were built on the same specs. And I think a lot of it is, they're not scheduling the same time as Pleasant Run or the school. There is a whole lot of parking lots, parking spots continuously around there, and that's, there should be more than enough with the other building.
And so for even, we did have that one open house night, but it, from what I'm receiving, everything from the school is basically shut down, minus the teacher, parent-teacher conferences. I don't believe that P R E has any extra per activity for students this whole entire school year, minus being the current. So they have limited all of their activities because of the parking situation.
I don't know why they've limited. That's not what the building principals are telling us. So is that perception of one or, I mean, we can dig deeper, but that's not the perception of people who are leaving the school.
And definitely for the P T A activity, they have shut those down as well, so...
What do you mean shut them down?
The activities that we used to have after school, a dance they were looking to have, the Polar Express.
Why, I mean, there's no re, the administration hasn't shut that down. Is that just a choice not to do?
Their request, and we'll get, you know, their specifics on who said what, is that we do not have the space or the time to do, primarily the parking portion of it, because it's such a K I situation, we're only doing the things we have to do, parent-teacher conferences.
So who is saying that, I guess, is what I would need to know.
It's coming from the P T A president and conversations with the principal.
Okay, because that's, we had talks today in our A O Academy meeting. I find that really hard to believe. And I can get clarification from both of those tomorrow, and like you know, at the next board meeting, but that's not what's being told to them by anyone. And I would really be shocked if that's what they're telling P K A, so.
Clarification on why there are no...
Casey and Jamelle were both here at the last meeting, so.
Yeah, clarification, clarification, just I'll, hold the correct, clarification point on why there are no aft, after-school activities out of sight of parent-teacher conferences for the school year for P R E. And the other, one of the...
So you have a musical program. Are you talking, you're talking P T A sponsor? Do you want to add a musical program?
Yeah, I've been to several musical things.
P T A functions. And then also, Polar Express is canceled. They did have, those were things that had in the past, when P R E was Welch.
And what you're saying is whoever your informant is, that your informant is telling you that they're canceling P T A events, the administrators are.
They're not canceling, they're highly recommending not to host them.
But at no time, they've said, no, do not host them.
The request was strongly that please do not ask us to host this event, because we do not want to do, have to deal with extra parking situation, other things, law, the parking effect, and all. Another comment I wanna talk to is relating to the Welch money and understanding right now, the selling of the Welch property is slated to go for the K through eight campus for Colrain.
Welch, Beavis, Pleasant Run, and any properties we sell that were closed because of the new schools.
And the reason why the request was to keep, one of the reasons why we're, as a community member, requesting for the Welch to possibly fund the parking at P R E is because the Welch property was within the P R E area, so losing the funds just most of state in that one general group. I just wanna speak to that point, if someone had heard that point. That was something that we were asking them, that the Welch property was here, was to keep, we wanted the Welch property in, didn't want Welsh school to be there.
And if we can go back to presentations we made on when we passed the new school idea, that that money would be used for the K through eight, because that's how we assured that Colrain Allen, Colrain Middle School parents would support the money, because the new down road, those lines would be funded their way.
And I think we wanna have new schools, and if that money can help build a new school at the Colrain Allen, Colrain Middle School, absolutely that money should go towards that new building fund, not to a parking lot.
The message that we put out, and we will continue to put out, is that there are only one or two people who come to a board meeting, and everybody needs to get involved. Because if you're only hearing from one and two, you're not hearing the true picture for the community. So we are asking and bringing information from the community, because I'm gonna go back to communication audit. We can't continue doing what we were doing. We have to reach out to people. We have to take suggestions that give us, and we have to try to improve things. So when we brought that to Colrain Allen, Colrain Middle, they were kinda shocked at what it is. They said, do you want us to come to board? I said, I want you to come to every work session. You should be there. You should be at board meetings to find out what's going on. But that's where that part came in. Just so, there will be a push, but you need all information and not just what you hear from the community coming.
Well, I think the important thing, I mean, we hear this word transparency. The one thing this board has been very transparent through the building projects was how the sale of properties, the money was going back in for the K eight building. We were able to, because we were under budget on some things, we were able to air-condition all the buildings in the district, and that was phenomenal. But at no time did we say, okay, whatever property, however much money we make from Taylor, that extra money, Taylor, you get, that's going in your pot, and you can have whatever you want. With Pleasant Run, you have the most valuable property, whatever money you get. I mean, we never talked like that. I mean, we, there was a plan, and it was, it was laid out, and the K eight building, that money was to be used for that. And everything that these new schools got, I mean, they got all the stuff that, you know, we set out to do. So I don't think there was ever a time that we alluded to, you know, if we're closing a school, you know, we sell your property, that money stays with that particular school. And that was never said. We can go through any kind of minutes. I'm very confident that wasn't.
And the hard part is, is that everybody paid for the new schools, but everybody doesn't have access to all of it.
True. I kinda see this as the Property Brothers on D I Y, when they go into a house, and they tear the wall out, and then all of a sudden, there's asbestos. And then there's this thing. So I think we've opened these new schools, we've got problems with them that we need to address. And if we have to pull funds from that, then we might have to pull funds from that, or get creative on how we fund the correction for that, we just didn't see coming. I mean, I'm kinda like on the fence. I can see where we would use some of it, maybe not all of it. But when all this was going on, we didn't have any perception that there might be issues that need to be addressed post-opening.
But I guess we'll never know either, because we haven't tried it the right way. But we could definitely check into things like, no administrator should be trying to P K A, they can't have that because of parking. So I need to get real good clarification on that. Stephanie will help me out with that, and we'll make sure you guys get that information probably next week, so we can start at the next board meeting.
Is it possible to go to some of these schools and have our board meetings at the schools and reach out to these different schools at P R E?
Next February one, is it Struble?
Yeah, I know, Struble is one, but I mean, to reach out to these other schools, because, you know, it's pretty tough for some of these people to make this so joint to come to Banning Road when they live, God knows where they live. And if we could move our whole operation to one school, I think we'd get a better...
It's your guys' meeting. Location is not an issue. Tell me where you'd like to have it. That's why we went to Buckprotect, it's your meeting.
I think that would be good, just for transparency reasons.
A couple of board meetings ago, when I said something about could we use some of the Welch money, the sale of the Welch, towards some of these, I was thinking more like, I think that you talked about a buzzer for the kids to get in, things like that, that were more, I'll say, lower cost with great outcomes, you know, resurfacing, resealing, and repainting the thing, that's probably, probably, what, ten, twenty grand?
Well, I mean, it's little things like that night, it was said there was not a buzzer there. There was a buzzer there, whether it was being used or not.
Sure.
There was already one installed. So it's just getting clarification and communicating things like that out.
And then the other thing, and Amy, you jump in if I say this wrong, but the other thing we have to keep in mind too, is we earn elk credits through the state of Ohio because of all the energy savings and all the different things that we did right on these building projects. When our number comes up with the state through High School Facility Commission, if we're not ready and in place to say we're ready to go, they pass this on up, and we just were not, you wanna talk about not being fiscally responsible? If we watched seventeen million dollars leave us and go to another school, because we've taken ten thousand out here, twenty thousand out here, fifteen thousand out here, and now all of a sudden, we didn't do our due diligence to follow through with what we said, that our end goal was to make sure, in addition to these elk credits, that we have enough money to do the final building project with our last elementary school. All the kids in this district get to be educated in state-of-the-art facilities. So that we have to keep in mind too, because the state's not gonna wait around for us. And it's not only the credits we've earned, but also the percentage of the state that we didn't build it to, so it's more than seventeen. So we, that's what we have in credits, and then whatever the magic number is, the state's ready to give us. And that's how we're gonna be able to build this new building, is because our goal was to hope that we didn't have to go to the taxpayer for bond money, that between the elk credits and the money from the high school facility, and hopefully we're able to get creative to get, I think the last time we talked, what, about six million short. But that's a lot of money that to take a chance on letting it go by, because if there's, if we're not ready, there's plenty of other districts that'll be right in line to grab that money. So we just need to keep that in mind as well.
Anything else on that? All right, the next topic is, the township trustees have met with the Mill Creek Alliance. We have two gentlemen present tonight, for anybody who has questions. A public meeting was conducted by the Colrain Township at Struble on Monday, January fourteenth, to discuss what would occur on the backside of Struble property. In collaboration with Mill Creek Alliance, Colrain Township, and Northwest Southern School District, we have an opportunity to donate a partial land behind Struble to allow the completion of the project. By donating the land, the school would have access to a walking path, and that's preserved, that the staff and students were told they, or we were told could help design what that kinda looks like and what feels like. After consulting with our attorneys, we feel the best way to contribute to this is probably through a property donation. We still have to go through the rules and regulations of any property sales, which is all for it to a charter school. It's seven acres. It is highlighted for you in that box up there on the bottom. So it's not really anything anybody's gonna want. We then have to put it out for bid, and then we don't have to accept any bids, and this is state law, this is not municipal install on it, this is what our attorneys have told us. And then we could go through the process of donating the property to Colrain Township. The need for the property came about because there has to be a match in order to get the grant. The match is our seven acres of property that would help meet that match. As you can see, we started from West Galbraith Road, flowed down into the backside of our property, and we are the finishing piece. If you would look at the orange line it's gone through there, that is a walking path that could be through there. The other thing we hope to establish after talking to Jeff Mills and the township, is the easement that would be granted out of the back of the building, so that eventually down the road, if we could put in a bridge, our buses would have a way to go out.
You mean right here?
Uh, the other way. Yep, yep, that's the line, that's correct. So after putting it out to you guys and talking to you about it, Jim attending the meeting asked for comments and feedbacks, did not receive any about it, because I told you, my recommendation was it was good for the kids, it was good for the school, it's good for our community, was to move forward with this process. And we brought these two gentlemen here tonight, in case you have any questions.
I signed in on your presentation, and it was to the point, very well explained, and the examples that you gave, where you guys have done this in other communities, looks great. So, yeah, I have no problem with it.
What's the timeframe like, when, say, you would begin to ending?
Well, our application for funding is due March eighth. Then Ohio State needs three months, three months or so, to make the decisions, and then allocate the money. So surely by the fall, we'll be ready to begin sending out to the design firm, and hopefully construction will begin the following, following spring to summer.
Basically, like a year from now?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, before your actions moving to, I mean, your design work would start going before that.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Well, we would start as initiate the process, it would be a letter of intent to join into the process. Obviously, our attorneys would check everything out, make sure we're good to go. And then we would work with the township, keep you informed, and get the project started as quick as possible. And the last update I have is, we had some questions from community members last time at the work session about the lighting at Pippen Road. So I wanted to make sure you guys had clarification on that. So I had Chris respond to some of the parents, and he responded the following. I have received communications from a few parents regarding the concern of how the lights on Pippen Road were being funded or put in. We communicated the concern with our design bill team at Colrain Township. It was discovered that zoning code would not allow the spill light from this district adding to new poles. Township agreed that it was an issue, as it is dark and unsafe. So the township checked with Duke and agreed to have them added to their street lighting. This is a good thing for us, but you gotta be very careful that we're not getting pitted against the township and ourselves. So it's just communication to you and the public. Why would we not accept this? It's a great deal. We've had complaints about the lighting, just like we have the parking and the road access. So we're looking into all of it, we'll continue to look into all of it. But this is something we didn't need board approval, because Duke and Colrain Township agreed to put it. And we weren't gonna say no, so just wanted everybody to make sure they knew what we had there. So I appreciate the feedback from the updates. I will look into all your concerns and questions and get back with you as much information, and populate your inboxes with as much information as we can, so we're all in the same page. Glad to.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have any comments or questions regarding anything we talked about?
All right, so the last item is an action item, revised calendar of board meetings for two thousand and nineteen. Since we scheduled board meetings and work sessions, we wanted to make sure they were stated correctly. I also reached out to all of you about changing the May board meeting date. We had scheduled it on a Monday night, when Northwest High School and Colrain High School have graduation, not on the same night. One had a Monday, one had a Tuesday. So we're moving that Monday night to the twentieth instead of twenty-third, and that's what you should see on this calendar.
We could have a board meeting at the graduation, that would've been the highest public attendance ever.
Now, I am very interested in moving the board meetings, so if you have suggestions out to the schools, I, we, that doesn't bother us at all. You just, it's your meeting. If you guys wanna communicate, decide where you wanna go. We can start with new buildings, but I also think we have outstanding auditoriums that were invested in both high schools, so... And then we have our middle school. So it just depends on what you guys wanna do. That's, it's not a problem for us to up and move. The problem is more for Chip and making sure he gets good sound.
Chip's been everywhere today.
We'll give you directions.
He's been to a mall.
So I'll communicate with you guys, throw out some suggestions, see what you think. And if any of the public wants to see it, it'll be via email, so it's on the record. So we need to approve this, so we can just make sure that's out.
I probably just messed this up, huh? He's giving me a look. I did. Did it take us back?
We just don't purple.
Oh, wait, 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 you're lying. How's that?
There is.
Figured it out.
Only because of the new system.
Oh, stop. I figured it out.
I'm saying, the old wouldn't have allowed you to do it.
Yeah, I know.
So it's good.
Okay. So I gotta give a mention first. I recommend to approve the revised times and places for the two thousand and nineteen Board of Education meeting calendar as listed.
Second.
Moved in second. Are there any questions? We should pass five to zero. Okay, we go into board member comments. Joe, do you have anything?
No, not really, but, well, I do have some. It's January twenty-fourth will be my day of end of the, I rode a bus for two and a half hours. Go ahead and laugh, Todd. This is not funny. They need shocks on those buses. Todd suggested a chiropractor, and I'm thinking and looking into it. But I'll tell you what, it was an experience, and I think everyone, if you get a chance to ride with the bus drivers, they have heck of a job. And I think everyone, if you get a chance to ride with the bus drivers, they have a heck of a job. And they, they deserve all the accolades possible because it was crazy. But the kids were wonderful, and they control those kids. That's it.
Yes, my comment actually goes back to our last working session because I know I was running out of here. But I was going to say this privately, but I will say it publicly, that, you know, I want to offer myself to Brenda to do whatever I can to help the students at Struble as far as helping to get to that reading room we're trying to get to. And I just really, you know, I don't, you know, not going to give up until it's over. So, whatever I can do to support your efforts and your activities as far as getting the members to me to get the active percentages, I'm willing to go out there. Hopefully, other members of the community will do the same, but I would publicly let you know that.
Thank you for that. Mark?
No.
Joe?
Just one thing, just wanted to apologize, not making it over to Colray's signing for their athletes today. But I did make it over to Northwest at three o'clock and just wanted to congratulate those six students. And just to highlight our, I can't think of the girl's name, the bowler, that she leads the city in bowling average at two nineteen a game. And that is phenomenal for a kid in high school. And she's going on to, I think it's Wright State to bowl in college. So, I wanted to congratulate her. I can't think of her name.
Oh, I have it. Sophie, Sophia?
Sophie.
Sophie, but I can't.
Yes, wanted to congratulate her.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Well, he beat me to that. I too apologize, would have liked to go over to Colray this morning, but that just did not happen. I want to thank Chip back there, I know he was there at seven AM, which I'm sure Dustin probably was as well. And Chip is here now, and we saw him at Northwest as well. I don't know, going to those signings, it's so neat. It's just so neat to see siblings grinning and proud of their brother or sister up on the stage and grandparents and parents. And it was really neat today listening to a couple of the coaches. And one in particular really got choked up. And it's just, that's one thing, for these students to achieve these levels that they're going to get to go ahead and continue their careers in college. There's just so many people that have to be behind them for that to happen, you know. So, a big thanks obviously goes out to the family, to the teachers. But our coaches that are there, the coaches in both schools for every sport, that are there working with the kids and teaching them discipline, teaching them so many different things that you have to be so well-rounded to be able to achieve the level these kids are at. And to hear, you know, these coaches talking and so proud and the bowler, Jim's talking about, her father is actually the coach, so that was really neat as well. So, we're going to wish her good luck in the postseason here and all of them good luck in college next year. But an extra special thing to all our coaches in both schools. So, with that, Chris always tells me I have to slow down, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Okay, second.
We should pass five to zero.
Keep forward, you guys get it.
Thank you.